Good evening and welcome to the last regular council meeting of the 2021 calendar year. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order. If you are willing and able, please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. There was some top of the meeting business which I must briefly address. Just as always, we are being livestreamed, so this meeting is in fact being recorded. Please take a moment now to silence your cellphones if they are not already so silenced. And for all public comment, please come to the podium, begin with your name and the block of your residence, and keep your comments to three minutes in length. Thank you very much. We go then to the roll call of members. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
Ms. Bakke.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
Here.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Here.
Thank you. We go then to approval of the minutes for the meeting of December fourteenth, 2021. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Council comments on the minutes. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakke.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye, thank you. Council members, with your forbearance, or really, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a motion to move Administration Resolution Number sixty-five, twenty-twenty-one to the next item in, to be the next item in our agenda. We have the county solicitor here, and she's on a tight timeline, but I wanted to make sure that she had the opportunity to address us. So could I have such a motion?
Motion to move Resolution sixty-five to this part of the agenda?
Second.
Okay, council comments on the agenda. Hearing none. I'm just gonna do this by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Administration Resolution Number sixty-five, twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. Sorry. The resolution authorizing the city of Lancaster to enter into a settlement, into the settlement agreements with McKeesen Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., Ortho McNeil Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Janssen Pharmaceutica, Inc., and agree to the terms of the Pennsylvania Opioid Misuse and Addiction Abatement Trust. The title, Mr. President.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, please.
Good evening. Jackie Fersick, Lancaster County Solicitor. Mr. President, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening, as well as the grace and courtesy of allowing me to bump in the agenda this evening. By way of background, the county began receiving information regarding the Attorney General's finalization of the settlement negotiations the week of Thanksgiving. And the information that's been provided by the Attorney General's Office continues as the settlement continues to progress through to completion. So I will try to provide you whatever information we currently have and continue to keep your solicitor updated. As was mentioned, our Pennsylvania Attorney General, along with numerous other states, are engaging in settlement negotiations with those named defendants, in which those defendants would take responsibility, financial responsibility at least, for their part in the impact of the opioid epidemic that's gripped this nation, this Commonwealth, as well as our own community. The settlement documents that have been negotiated by the AG's office and that the county and municipalities over ten thousand residents are being asked to sign would release those named defendants from potential litigation, and in return, our community would receive a portion of the negotiated settlement amount. It would also enjoin those defendants from participating in opioid dispersment going forward for up to ten years. So that's an important part of the settlement negotiations. The settlement amount that our community could receive could be as high as fifteen-point-seven million dollars. That number unfortunately is not firm, as there are a number of variables that could impact not only the total settlement amount that the Commonwealth receives, but also the total amount that our community could receive. And it largely depends on the participation level. And of course, the city is one. Based off of the trust document developed by the Attorney General's Office, our community will receive two-point-two-six-six percent of the funds allocated to Pennsylvania. And I would assume that you guys would like to know a little bit about what was determined to be a part of the allocation. There are four different criteria that was put into how it is that, you'll have to forgive me as I look through this, I apologize, I had this organized. There are four different criteria that were, that were used to determine what the allocation would be, and that's deaths by opioid, how much naloxone was provided to a community during a certain period of time, as well as how much prescription was being completed in our community during that timeframe, and what other impacts there might have been to our community. And so based upon those criteria, they were given certain amounts and statistics that were provided to the Attorney General's Office. That is how they came up with the percentage that would, that is being applied to Lancaster County and our community. The county has been tasked by the AG's office to obtain the release of those seventeen qualifying municipal subdivisions. And I do apologize, we only learned about this about two and a half weeks ago, and the releases are supposed to be signed on or as close to January second, twenty-twenty-two as possible. And that has a lot to do with the timeline that has been established by our Attorney General's Office, as well as the participating states and the defendants. Our Attorney General's Office needs to provide a list of releasing subdivisions or litigants who would participate in this settlement to the defendants by the end of January, by January twenty-second. At that time, then the defendants plan to review who is participating and weigh whether or not they are willing to continue with the settlement negotiations. They have until February, about mid-February, to inform the states that they are willing to participate and finalize the settlement, and then we would start dispersments later on this year. How the dispersments are going to occur is that they're going to be front-loaded. So we would receive two dispersments during the course of the first year, and then the Johnson &amp; Johnson settlement is being dispersed over a course of eight years. The other pharmaceutical, the distributors are being dispersed over a period of eighteen years. And so we would receive those dispersments going forward after twenty-twenty-two on an annual basis. So that is what I have. What questions can I answer for you? I know that's a lot, all in a short period of time.
Yeah, I think my first question would be, and really my only, is, is there any indication from county government about how the funds will be used or directed? And I guess, I guess this is sort of crucial to that, are there any limitations in the settlement on how the funds can be used or directed by the receiving municipalities?
Yes, there are. And one of the things the Attorney General has stressed is that he does not want this to be like the Tabaco settlement. He wants it to go to abatement and making sure that the opioid crisis is being addressed. And so they, they have a working document that they are referring to as Exhibit E, which outlines what it can, what the money can be used for. Things like the Drug Task Force, things like programs in schools, things like re-entry programs from prisons to make sure that people who are addicted to opioids don't come back out and start using again. So it's those types of things. We are waiting for some specific, more defined information from the Attorney General's Office. I had hoped to have that for this evening's presentation. It's not been released, but as soon as I get some more information, I would provide that to your solicitor.
Counselors?
Yes, I have a question. Did I hear you say that after ten years, those that are participating will no longer be eligible? And I didn't catch the last part.
As part of the proposed settlement, Johnson &amp; Johnson, at least with their, their settlement document, would be enjoined from dispersing and dispensing opioids for ten years. That is part of their settlement document. For the distributors, they have a five-year prohibition on dispersment, and that's part of the settlement documents.
Thank you.
I would say there are also some other measures that they need to take, and I can provide. The Attorney General's Office gave us a PowerPoint presentation that outlines it. We can certainly provide that for you. There is also a website, the National Opioid Settlement Website, which is a great resource for everyone. The documents are there, as well as the restrictions for the potential defendants and litigating parties, municipalities, and states. All of that listed is there, so it's a great resource for everyone to check out.
Thank you. And please do forward that presentation if you can. Other questions from council? Other questions from the public? We will start with Mr. Stuldrer. Yeah, but since we don't have the other microphone down, if you wouldn't mind, just since we seem to have the one microphone set up, just stepping to the side, thank you.
Tim Stuldrer, One United Lancaster, would any of the money come directly to the municipalities, or would it all be handled at the county level?
What we are hearing from the Attorney General's Office is that all dispersments would go to the county. I think that was inconsistent with what was originally discussed, which was supposed to go to all municipalities over ten thousand residents. That has since changed.
I'll follow up on that, just to, I see you, Ms. Lopez. I'll follow up on that just to ask, and you may not be aware, is there any intention, once the money has been received by the county, to distribute it to individual municipalities or school districts? Have they given any signal about what their intentions are in terms of making sure the money does get out to the community?
They have not. And I think because this is such a fluid situation and such a quick period of time, they have certainly indicated, I think, on the record at the public meeting when they approved their own resolution, that public input and municipality input would certainly be included in that, but no decisions have been made, as we don't even know how much money we could potentially get.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez, please.
Jessica Lopez, East Marion Street. My only question would be, would any of this money directly affect the people that were affected by the opioid crisis, or are they all going to the county to distribute? Will anything be going directly to the citizens of the cities and the counties?
Under Exhibit E, there is not direct payments to individuals who have had an opioid addiction. There is, in the document, there is the ability for programs to help those individuals who have those addictions.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Are there any other questions from the public for the solicitor? Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakke.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye, thank you very much. All right, and thank you every, to all members of council for your forbearance. That brings us to our first public comment period reserved for those persons who have contacted the city clerk prior to the meeting. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Okay, that would take us then to reports requested by council. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do not, Mr. President.
Thank you. Which brings us to interim reports of committees of council. Do we have any, Mr. Harris?
We do, Mr. President. We have one from Ms. Bakke, from Finance.
Excellent. Counselor Bakke, please.
Thank you very much, Council President. Excuse me. The Finance Committee met on, I will, excuse me, I will be giving an interim report on our budget hearings, which were on December eleventh. The Finance Committee met on December eleventh to hold the annual budget hearings for the city of Lancaster. Department Directors and Bureau Chiefs came before council to discuss their parts of the proposed twenty-twenty-two budget. These presentations provided a deep dive into how our city government works, the challenges that each department faces, and an overview of how our city's employees are serving the public. We began the day with public safety. Chief Scott Little presented for the Bureau of Fire and discussed plans to hire fourteen new firefighters in January of twenty-twenty-two. These hires will fill current vacancies and also replace firefighters who are slated to retire later in the year. More than half of these incoming firefighters are either city residents, graduates of McCaskey High School, or Thaddeus Stevens College of Technology. The twenty-twenty-two fire budget includes an eight-point-two percent increase over twenty-twenty-one. This is primarily driven by adding additional employees, including their training and equipment expenses, and payments on new apparatus. The number of calls were down in twenty-twenty-one, driven mostly by fewer medical assistance calls where ambulances were also reporting. The Bureau logged over ten thousand training hours and leads the state with training and certifications. Chief Little also provided highlights for the upcoming year, which include the opening of the East King Street Station, tentatively scheduled for June first, hiring a new training coordinator, and adding an AmeriCorps Vista to increase engagement and team development, and the replacement of apparatus to standardize their fleet of vehicles. Chief John Bay presented for the Bureau of Police. He noted the changes in leadership that occurred in twenty-twenty-one, including his own appointment as interim chief and then later permanent chief in June, and two out of three division commanders, which were newly promoted after retirements. Other highlights of this transformative year for the department included the re-establishment of the Bike Patrol, restructuring and expansion of the community engagement team from two employees to eighteen, and the external review of the use of force processes. The twenty-twenty-two police budget includes a five-point-six percent increase over twenty-twenty-one. This is directly related to rising costs of officer salaries and benefits, and ongoing costs for communications equipment and body worn cameras. The replacement of four police cars additionally that are at the end of their useful life. Still, the department continues to get significant grant funds for programs and get support from the Police Foundation for the K-nine and mounted units. Chief Bay noted that recruitment is an ongoing challenge with a smaller pool of applicants. Still, efforts to improve and rethink recruitment strategies are continuing. During the past year, the oral board exam questions were rewritten to ensure no bias, and members of the Police and Community Working Group have been invited to sit in on the oral board exams. Currently, there are ten officer vacancies, and the Bureau will continue to focus on the city for those recruitment efforts. Additional priorities for twenty-twenty-two include increased police officer wellness, including in-house wellness and trauma-informed care in partnership with LGH, peer support, and critical incident stress management. Director Chris Delfts presented for the Department of Community Planning and Economic Development. He noted that in twenty-twenty-one, the department added twenty-one new hires, which represents over forty percent of their total department staff. Director Delfts made note of significant achievements of each division. Highlights include the Land Development and City Design Division, which completed twenty-six land development reviews, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight new residential units were approved, and over six thousand square feet of new commercial space were approved. And they launched the Comprehensive Plan Project, which included engaging over two-thousand people in public participation. The Bureau of Building Codes overhauled their operations to establish a new permit window and provide better service and efficiency. In the Division of Health, Housing, and Community Development, property maintenance and inspections completed the external review of over eighteen thousand properties, performed twenty-seven-hundred rental inspections, and resumed systematic inspections. Lead poisoning prevention and critical repair completed lead remediation in forty-two units, with twenty-eight more in process so far. In affordable housing, twenty-eight new affordable units were funded through the home program, with eighty-two additional units at two-thirteen college Ave. Director Delfts showed us a map of the investments across the city in lead hazard control, healthy homes, new construction, critical repair, and home rehabilitation. This shows investment across the entire city, but particularly in the southeast and southwest. Finally, in the Health Bureau, both the Health and Housing Social Service Case Manager and a Health Service Outreach Officer were added. Over six hundred food facility inspections were completed in twenty-twenty-one. Sixty-six residents were provided with social service case management, and the Bureau responded to thirty cases of lead poisoning in children. The department is expected to end twenty-twenty-one four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars under budget. The CPED budget for twenty-twenty-two includes an eleven-point-nine percent increase. This increase is a direct reflection of the cost of funding positions which were previously covered by grants, which have been reduced. Consultant support for the Comprehensive Plan, and third-party building inspection support. Four new positions in the department will be entirely grant-funded. This includes a Grant Manager for the American Rescue Plan Act and an Employment Navigator, both funded by the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Goals in twenty-two for the department include increasing the rate of lead grant rehabilitation work, finalizing rental and lead ordinance changes, proactively addressing blighted properties, coordinating healthy homes initiatives, and completing a draft of the Comprehensive Plan, among many others. No changes are proposed to the City Council budget for twenty-twenty-two. Within the Mayor's Office budget, significant change is due to realigning the Lancaster Office of Promotion under Neighborhood Engagement. Additionally, two grant administrator positions will be aligned under the Mayor's Office. One moved from Administrative Services, and another new position to do fundraising and grant development for special projects and initiatives. Director Milzey Carrasco presented the budget for the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Engagement and Office of Promotion. The workforce of the department is twenty-five. Twenty of the positions are full-time, and fourteen of them are funded by grants. Highlights of the department for twenty-twenty-one include improved language access and city services, community engagement efforts around the Comprehensive Plan, a new Juneteenth event, Welcoming Week, the Mayor's Neighborhood Week, holiday events, securing a three-year grant to fund eleven Vista positions and a Vista leader, and the realignment of Loop and the Public Arts Community Engagement Specialist and the City Hall Receptionist into the department. In twenty-twenty-two, grants and sponsorships will make up almost six-hundred-thousand dollars of the Neighborhood Engagement budget, and a goal of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in sponsorships in Loop. The Visitor Center will be rebranded to the Welcome Center to better align activities with Lancaster's welcoming city status. Director Stephen Campbell presented his report via video for the Department of Public Works. The department includes over two-hundred employees, and the budget is made up of funds from the General Fund, Stormwater Management, wastewater, water, and solid waste and recycling funds. The twenty-twenty-two department budget is just point-one percent higher than twenty-twenty-one. In the Division of Public Right of Way, significant accomplishments for twenty-twenty-one include the launch of Vision Zero, Howard Ave Street improvements, the South Duke Concept and Design with significant public input, and the Milburn Park Kaboom Build. Goals for the Division in twenty-twenty-two include the implementation of Vision Zero projects in twenty-five locations, continued implementation of bike infrastructure, upgrading flashing signals at school crossings, development of a parks and open space plan, and piloting a sidewalk repair assistance program for property owners. In the Division of Construction and Operations, accomplishments for twenty-twenty-one include completing ADA curb ramps a year ahead of schedule, streetlight buybacks which saved the city nearly half a million dollars annually, the replacement of more than forty thousand linear feet of sewer lines, and all twenty-twenty-one self-perform paving on Prospect, Hager, Franklin, Conestoga, Broad, Green, and Strawberry Streets. Goals for the Division in twenty-twenty-two include repaving three-point-eight miles of city streets, the expansion of the Adopt-A-Block Program to Adopt It, streamlining of the park and event permitting process, and the completion of the South Tank in Lancaster Township. Director Campbell also noted that about eight percent of the city's water mains are concrete and asbestos, called transite pipes, which are over fifty-five years old. The replacement of those mains is funded by the ongoing PUC rate case, which is expected to wrap up later in twenty-twenty-two. The Solid Waste and Recycling Fund budget includes a proposed increase of four-point-seven percent. Almost all of that increase is directly related to increases in tipping, hauling, and disposal fees. The wastewater budget includes a reduction by five-point-seven percent, which is due to the savings from refinancing debt earlier this year. The Division of Sustainability and Environment, formerly Stormwater, completed several green infrastructure projects in twenty-twenty-one, and also filled the position of Urban Forester. In twenty-twenty-two, they will continue the urban tree management plan, the Long Park, Longs Park Wetland Project, and a Stormwater Ordinance Manual, Ordinance and Design Manual. Director Patrick Hopkins presented the Administrative Services budget. The department includes accounting, human resources, procurement and collections, and IT. In twenty-twenty-one, major accomplishments of the department included the refinancing of bonds, resulting in seven-point-one million dollars in savings, filing the PUC rate case, a twenty-twenty audit which received the highest rating possible, the hiring of a chief data and technology officer, and trauma-informed training initiatives in partnership with LG Health. In early twenty-twenty-two, the department will complete a compensation study for employee salaries, a fee study for city services, the conversion to monthly billing and online billing, and code and permitting software upgrades. Additional goals for the rest of the year include implementation of recommendations from the fee study, the development of a professional IT team, and implementation of a learning management system for city employees to provide more equitable access to employee learning and engagement. Major changes for the department in twenty-twenty-two budget come in the way of increased insurance costs, including coverage against cyber attacks and increased medical insurance cost. Across all city departments, it's clear that our city employees are dedicated to providing services to our residents. Each presentation highlighted the ways that employees were making real differences in the lives of residents, and the proposed twenty-twenty-two budget includes investments in making their jobs more efficient, increasing staff in areas where there is a need, and making sure they are compensated fairly and equitably for the work that they do. I thank all of the members of the city leadership team who came to the budget hearings and provided us with an important overview of this work, and how the budget matches the priorities we've heard from residents again and again. I also thank members of the public who attended the hearings in full or part or watched online. No budget action was taken at the hearing. The budget will come up for final passage in the legislative agenda this evening. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Counselor Bakke. It is my understanding, before we move to our legislative agenda, that Counselor Craig has an item for the good of the order.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to add Resolution Number sixty-six, twenty-two thousand twenty-one to the agenda this evening. This authorizing an application for seventy-five thousand dollars to DCED, for a DCED grant to the community and economic, from the Community and Economic Development Municipal Assistance Program.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Council comments on the motion to alter the agenda. Hearing none, I'll do it by acclamation in that case. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. We move then to, so we will see that under heading B. You can't see it up there, but it'll be after Administration Resolution Number sixty-five. We move then to our legislative agenda. Ordinances for final passage, this is the big one. Administration Bill Number twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. An ordinance of the council of the city of Lancaster, county of Lancaster, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appropriating the specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the city government, here and after, set for purposes of the city government here and after set forth during the year 2022, allowing for a severance provision, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Bakay.
Thank you very much. So you heard my summary of the budget, so I won't rehash that. But I would like to hereby make a motion to amend Ordinance Twenty-four twenty-one by amending the following line items in the General Fund portion of the 2022 proposed budget. Under General Fund Reserves, Other Revenue Section, which is line item one zero 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 four four nine nine zero zero zero, reduced by sixty-nine thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars from two million two hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars to two million one hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Under General Fund Expenses, Police Bureau, line item number one five zero one zero zero one six one one five zero zero, reduced by sixty-nine thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars from one million three hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars to one million two hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council comments on the motion to amend.
Council President.
I'll just make, to further explain this motion, these amendments are needed to correct an error in the Police Bureau budget, which was included, which included a duplicate employee position on the staffing schedule, and the Police Bureau salaried personnel line item. The net effect of these amendments reduces the Police Bureau's total 2022 budget by sixty-nine thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars, which reduces the need to use the fund balance reserves to balance the 2022 budget by the same amount. So combined, these amendments would reduce the overall 2022 general fund budget from sixty-seven million one hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and three dollars to sixty-seven million and forty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Other council comments on the motion to amend? From the public on the motion to amend? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the amended, on the amended budget. Counselor Bakay, you have the floor.
Thank you. I don't really have anything else to add unless I have anything from administration or, okay.
Okay.
We've had several meetings where we've talked about it, so I'm okay.
All right. Other council comments on the amended budget on the table? Other comments from the public on the budget as amended? Hearing none. Mr. Harris, please.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye. We have a budget, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
This next part is equally important. Administration Bill Number twenty-five twenty-one. Mr. Harris.
An ordinance amending the Code of the City of Lancaster, Chapter Two Seventy, Taxation, Article Four, Property and Residence Tax, Section Two Seventy Twenty-Six, Levying Rate, by fixing the tax rate at eleven point seven mils on property in the City of Lancaster for general revenue purposes, allowing for a severance provision, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Bakay.
Thank you. The only thing to note here is there's no change to the tax rate for 2022 in this, in this bill.
That is, we've heard it already, but that is excellent to hear. I'm sure everybody agrees that their property taxes are too high, and it's been a rough couple of years anyway. So thank you very much. Other council comments on the bill? Other comments from the public on the bill? Hearing none. Mr. Harris, please.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
Well, Mayor, just to note, or maybe Patrick will have this off the top of their head. First of all, thank you, everybody. Is this, somebody tell me how long, is this the longest period we've gone without a property tax mileage increase since when? Does anybody know off the top of their head?
Yes, since 2018.
No, and then, but, but how, do we have any context of how that compares in terms of like similar periods of not increasing the mileage rate in our recent history? Does anyone know off the top of their head?
Between 2010 and 2013.
Okay. Thank you.
Go on.
Much appreciated. And thank you, everybody.
Patrick Hopkins, the encyclopedia of the city's financials.
I believe you mean the budget gentleman.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thus deemed the budget gentleman.
Thank you, everyone, for humoring me. Administration Bill Number twenty-six twenty-one. Mr. Harris.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, establishing appropriations of three million one hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars of American Rescue Plan Act proceeds received in 2021, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Bakay.
Thank you very much. In short, what this does, and we spoke about this in our previous meeting, allows us to use a portion of American Rescue Plan Act funds as allowed for revenue replacement related to budget shortfalls that are due to the pandemic. So this is for the 2021 year, not for the budget that we just passed.
Thank you. Are there other council comments on Bill Number twenty-six? Other comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
All right. That brings us to Administration Bill Number twenty-seven twenty-one. Mr. Harris.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania, establishing appropriations of one million five hundred thousand dollars of general fund reserves, providing for the repeal of inconsistent ordinances, providing for the separability of the ordinance, and providing that the ordinance shall take effect as provided by Pennsylvania law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Bakay.
Thank you very much. So this bill allows us to move funds from the General Fund to our Internal Service Fund, which is the fund where we pay our medical expenses from after a period of years where some departments go over allotted amounts and others have surpluses. This is just allowing us to replenish that fund after several years where there has been, there's been a deficit due to medical costs, which are unpredictable.
Council comments on the bill? From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
That brings us to the Resolutions section of our agenda, beginning with Administration Resolution Number sixty-four twenty-one. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, amending the schedule of fees and charges for solid waste and recycling services provided by the city's contractor to owners of residential properties and owners of opt-in properties to become effective January first, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, Counselor Bakay.
Thank you very much. So I mentioned this in my interim report, and I'll just go back to that, that this is a proposed increase in the budget of four point seven percent, which I believe amounts to about four dollars per quarter, per customer, and that's completely due to increases in tipping, hauling, and disposal fees. As Director Campbell noted in his presentation, disposal volumes have increased by two hundred tons per month since the beginning of the pandemic.
Council comments.
Council President, if I may?
Please.
The only thing that I really want to say about this topic is, looking at other cities that have really struggled even with trash pickup and now dealing with issues related to health, just even from like rats, I think that's something quite remarkable for us as a city to be able to have done, is to go this entire kind of unstable time without any interruption to services. So I just want to shout out to the team, because I think it's something small that we don't often think about, but other cities are really struggling with it.
Other council comments? Comments from the public on the resolution? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And I'm sorry, did we have, we did have a motion on that? Mr. Royo. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Which brings us to, which brings us to Administration Resolution Number sixty-six twenty-one. You'll recall that we dispensed with Resolution Number sixty-five at the top of the meeting. Mr. Harris.
The resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, authorizing this admission of an application seeking funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for Municipal Assistance Program for City Comprehensive Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Council President. The, this resolution, the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code grants governed bodies and their planning agencies the power to develop comprehensive plans to develop, to develop comprehensive plans to help guide the development of their municipalities. The City of Lancaster will be undertaking its first comprehensive plan since 1993 and is committed to community engagement, in-depth analysis, and sound policies. The PA Department of Community and Economic Development makes grants in aid available to such projects through the Municipal Assistance Program, the programs of which the City of Lancaster has applied for previously, requesting funds from the Municipal Assistance Program. The Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development has requested a formal resolution authorizing approval of the same. This resolution will be authorizing, will authorize a grant application for seventy-five thousand dollars to Pennsylvania, from Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Municipality Assistance Program.
Thank you, Counselor Craig. Council comments on the resolution? I'll just note aloud how much I appreciate efforts by the city to defray costs like this from being displaced on to our property taxpayers and other rate and fee payers. And thank you, Counselor Craig. Are there comments from the public on the resolution, on Resolution Number sixty-six? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Ms. Bakay.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Garcia Molina.
Aye.
Mr. Soto.
Aye.
And President Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
All right. That concludes our legislative agenda for the meeting, and indeed for 2021. It brings us to our second public comment period. Open for comment about issues not on the agenda. You know the rules, duration of comments is limited to three minutes. Ms. Lopez, please.
Hi, Jessica Lopez for 37 East Marion. I'm going to ask that you bear with me. The first thing I have to speak on, I'm here to advocate for somebody else who could not be present today because she is at work. Her name is Mashanna Campbell of five, she would have been of 530 St. Joseph Street, but as of December 12th, 2012, she was kind of unlawfully put out of her home. She said, she wrote a few things down for me to read to you, guys, and it starts off, "My name is Mashanna Campbell of 530 St. Joseph Street. I moved there May 1st of 2018. The house needed a few repairs, but the landlord claimed he would be working on them. Years passed, and the house deteriorated. On August 30th at 9:48 a.m., I received a text message from Pete, her new landlord, stating for her to call him. He proceeded to tell her that the house had a few violations, which we later found out was eleven code violations, and that they would need more than ten thousand dollars in order to fix the property, which him and his partners did not have. He proceeded to tell her that, you know, the city was pushing for him to file eviction." So not wanting to have an eviction on her record, because it's already hard enough to qualify for apartments as it is in Lancaster right now, she kind of passively ended up moving out without thirty-day notice, without a place for her and her children to move to. She's currently residing at her cousin's house and driving back and forth to Middletown to work every day while she's homeless after paying years and years of rent to a landlord that didn't put any money into this property, then sold it to people who are going to flip it for gentrified rates and let them bully her out of her home. This is a longtime citizen of this city who's got great credit, who works hard. She's not out here on these streets because she has, and, and you know, it's not to knock the people who have mental health conditions or drug addictions, but she's not out here for any circumstances other than greed of these landlords that we're allowing to buy properties in this city of. And I feel like at some point, there needs to be some type of reprimand. And the fact that this house is sitting at 530 St. Joseph Street with eleven code violations and has not been condemned while she was put out of her house is a problem. I know I spoke to Ishmael, and he is aware of the situation. I also talked to Janet about it. And I'm, you know, trying to find a way to get her some type of advocacy and assistance, but also to get the city to take action on these landlords that continually do this, continually bully and push people out of their homes without giving them consideration to their rights or to their living after this fact. This lady has children. She works hard. And now she's going to have to relocate to another city. This is a good citizen of your city who's going to leave. I don't know, I just feel like she deserves some type of just do, and the city should find a way to take action in that regard. With that one being said, I'll flip over to the next situation, which is why I'm here. The safety of our children should be the first thing that gets discussed when we're talking about where we're allocating our dollars to and where we're talking about how we plan for our future. As it stands right now, our schools aren't safe for our kids. My children go to Lincoln Elementary, and they have not been in school for the last three, I mean, Lincoln Middle School, and they have not been in school for the last three days. Between the kids being jumped after school and before school, between the threats coming to the schools, and between the issues of... and between the issues of a rape allegation at McCaskey and the walkouts that just transpired, that entire corner where you expect us to send our children is no longer safe for them. There's thousand, over 1,000 kids in this sector that are not being protected, and then we're being forced, legally forced, to send our children there for hours upon a day with no communication and no real protections. I know that it's not city council's job to regulate our schools, but it is city council's job to protect the citizens of our city. Those children are citizens of our city at this point. And those dollars that are being allocated to the police department, those dollars that are being allocated over here to incarcerate, to rehabilitate, to medicate them are not being put in place to save them beforehand, and this is an issue. We're worried about raising the police budget 5.7%. They could sell the tank they have to raise their budget, to raise their funds. Our money needs to go to our kids who are being looked over right now. My kids can't go to school, people are being jumped at their school. Within the last month and a half, at least three to five children have been pulled from Lincoln alone for bullying, for assaults, for different situations. This is an everyday occurrence at Lincoln Middle School, and this is a problem, especially when you go to the school district and they're telling you you have no options. I went in the administrative building yesterday to find out what my options were to pull my children, and they told me they either had to go cyber or I had to come up with thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to get them to a safe school, which is segregated classism. So now either I put my children in an unsafe position or I put myself in an unsafe position. Because give it another two or three days, I'm pretty sure children and youth will be calling me. I'm pretty sure somebody's going to try to fine me for my kids not being in school, but they will not return. This school is not being transparent with what's transpiring there. We're getting generic text messages when they're shooting threats. These are not things to take lightly, and being that the school does not have protocols in place to protect our children, there should not be protocols in place to violate us for trying to protect them. I don't know, I don't have solutions for you guys right now. And if I did, I would present them to you. I don't want to be another rannar. But at the same time, I want my city dollars, and I want the people that sit on this board and sit on those boards and sit in that police department to find a way to protect my children before I have to find a way to pull them out of this justice system. And I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you.
Yep. Also, really quickly, and I hear you, Councilor Diaz. Really quickly, before you leave, on the resident of, former resident of 530 St. Joseph, if you would check in with Ms. Rebecca Geyser, Rebecca, can you wave? Who I communicated with about it, she may be able to provide you with some additional context.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilor Diaz, please.
And I also wanted to inform you that I did speak with Chief Bay. I don't know if you received the information that I sent you through email. I know for some reason your email coming back gets blocked in spam for some reason, but I just wanted to let you know that he did request that you go and file a report. And you can also, I also mentioned that maybe you can speak with one of the social workers there as well.
Yeah, that's, I get that. I can't go in there, I'm not allowed with an honor fee to the police department. But, no, understand that. Like I told you, it's not, like, get that, it's not my child. My child is not being directly threatened. He's not a fighter, he's, my kids are nerdy. Both my boys that are in middle school, they're very nerdy, they're very quiet, they sit to the side. They're not being directly affected as of yet, but I'm not going to put them in a position where they could ever be directly affected. My niece was jumped there a month and a half before on Victory Field. Two, two girls were jumped on Victory Field during early dismissal on a Wednesday in front of odding amount of students. There's no teachers out there breaking it up, there's no adults out there breaking it up. There's three RSO officers between Lincoln and McCaskey. These girls were jumped by Lincoln and McCaskey students. And it's nothing, like, understand that, like, my niece had to leave school. She left the district. And get that, like, we're pulling our kids from the district. Attendance rates have to be dropping, which is funding, which is everything that we're sitting here talking about. People are pulling their kids from the district left and right. They're going into cyber schools, which they're not really even learning from. Lucky my niece got into the Friendship School, which is a school my sister knows the, like, the creator of, but it's like, like, not everybody has these options. I was a child that got lost in this system. I got kicked out of school in the sixth grade. I never passed the sixth grade in Lancaster City. And that's what happens to children in our school district. And it just, it like, it kills me that we sit here and we talk over all these things all the time, but they don't never really come up. Especially those kids on the southeast, especially those kids at Lincoln right now. They're, they're going through a whole lot. And it's sad that our city isn't even really supporting them. We're ignoring them, and those parents that are there are like me. They're the tired, distracted workers. So they get ignored and disregarded, and people get smart with them because they're not the PTO moms that are there baking cookies every day. Nobody wants to pay attention to you because they don't feel like you're as supportive to their school. We don't have time to be supportive to your school, we're supportive to our children. We're single parents. Every time I call up there, somebody's getting smart, and all I'm trying to do is get information about the safety of my child. And then they get mad when you don't send your kids. Why would I send my kids to you?
Excuse me, Mayor Sorachi, is there anything that you can follow up with the school district in regard to these issues?
I have had, I'm familiar with the incident that you're referring to related to the rape. I have had conversation about that. I've elevated a number of these issues. I myself broke up a fight right near the McDonald's as I was driving by. I was dumbstruck that so many adults in their cars saw what was happening and didn't get out.
And nobody stops anything.
I know what you're speaking about. My child also goes to this school. I am aware, we are having conversations about various issues related to the safety of children. It extends far beyond what you are talking about tonight. And those conversations I've had with Dr. Rao and Matt Prezwaara, as well as Chief Bay, our SROs. I want to say that we can have adults everywhere all the time when this happens, but I know that we can't. I know that there are many other issues that are affecting our kids at this moment as we are coming out of a pandemic and all of the, all of the things, Ms. Lopez. I do not want my silence tonight, although, thank you, Councilor Diaz, to indicate that there is not an expression of support, caring, concern, and action. That is not true. There is, there are those steps, many different steps are being taken. I can also tell you that the school board is aware, as well as the leadership. And this is just going to take all of us to do what we need to do to help support our kids, raise them up, get them educated and successful. And we're not going to be able to do that by ourselves. So this also goes to the heart of the fair funding trial that's happening right now. I'm just going to say, again, if you're a parent in the school district of Lancaster, you're paying very careful attention to what's happening. I know I am. From the minute that my daughter started elementary school, we are talking about funding cuts, no librarians, no gifted program ever at Fulton. Only, only two elementary schools had access to that. Lack of equity across the district in lots of different ways. All of these things, year after year after year. And so here we are again. And if you saw Matt's, Mr. Prezwaara's comments in the paper today, it's, it's the same, it's the same story. So what are we doing? We're continuing to elevate these issues, continuing to fund the SRO positions. We're continuing to support the district in their safety protocols. We're considering to support our families as best as we can. I want to just say that, A, just a couple of things on the housing piece. I wish that we had some power as you are talking about landlords, and we don't. We cannot censure, these are civil matters between tenants and landlords. Yes, there are the issues related to the housing violations. In no way, and I want to underscore this, in no way are any of the housing inspections intended to be used as a tool to evict persons from their home. They are only intended to ensure the safety of the residents who are living in those homes as rental units. And it pains me that, that this person could have been, you know, that, that could have been used against her in some way unknowingly. And she does have rights. Unfortunately, it's also very difficult to move quickly and to know what to do in those kinds of situations because a landlord does have a lot of power that they're yielding in these situations. So I do understand that. But I also know that we need to protect residents that are living in homes that are unsafe and unhealthy. So I'm happy that you're going to talk with Rebecca. We can continue this conversation. We do have somebody here that can potentially help. I know that housing is, is very challenging. And, and we can talk some more.
Thank you. And I will say that the school board has been very open. I've spoken to Jen Beniston, I've spoken to Karina. Like, they, they are open to speak to us. It's not like the school board is shutting us down, I will say that, like. But something's got to give.
Yeah.
I appreciate yous.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Are there any other public comments? Are you just shifting in your cedar?
Yeah, I think I need to say something.
Okay.
Matt Beeks with Impact Missions. I just wanted, don't know the situation around 530 St. Joseph Street. However, I do believe there is a underutilized resource. I know she had just started in August, but my experience with the housing social worker has been phenomenal. And I just want to commend, obviously it started here or approved by here, but I believe if you can promote that, the resource of your housing social worker, it could go a long way into resolving the issues or at least explaining the issues of helping families like what happened at 530 St. Joseph Street, explaining their rights and providing a solution, a positive solution. And so first off, commend you for seeing that need, elevating that need, providing a resource for that need, but also finding a way to really promote that housing social worker because phenomenal, phenomenal experience that I've had with her. So thank you very much, and just wanted to say that and encourage you to let people know about, about the housing social worker.
Mr. Beeks, you just made my heart sing. Thank you. Sonia is the first in her role, she has been doing an incredible job. I also want to commend you for your work and your contributions to affordable housing in our community. We count on you as a critical partner, we appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
What she said. That brings us, actually, you can just roll right along, Mayor. That brings us to your report.
I don't have a formal report this evening, but I do just want to acknowledge that on this last meeting of 2021, we are marking the last official meeting of Councilor Soto. And I know that on January 3, we will be all back here again as part of our reorganization to welcome a new council member. And to, it will, it will certainly be different than four years ago, but no less significant for this body. And I just, I know that we'll have time to say all the nice things we want to say about Councilor Soto, but I just didn't want to go tonight without marking this as your last official meeting, your last budget. It's been a pleasure to serve alongside of you, Pete, and thank you for your service to the City of Lancaster.
That brings us to my last report of the year. Not to pile on, of course, but Councilor Soto represents something that we need more of in this community and in government. You know, you want to talk about somebody who is just like an honest person, puts in a hard day's work, and then comes here to figure out what it is they can do for their community, somebody who prefers substance to style, actually doing in, learning about things, doing the, doing the work. I think we could all, certainly I have benefited significantly from the example and the tutelage of Councilor Soto. We'll take some more time to publicly embarrass you, Counselor, in January, but I did just want to pile on. I also want to take a moment, now that the, the information has gone out, I want to take a moment to thank Fire Chief Little for his service to the city. We've seen a lot of progress since he has been our fire chief, including two new fire stations. And if you have not had the opportunity to enter the new fire stations, they are impressive and designed with our firefighters in, in mind. And there have been some, some tough calls that have had to be made since Chief Little has been our fire chief, and he has stepped in directly and made them. And so as he continues on his journey with Manheim Township moving forward, we wish him, or I at least, I assume council concurs with me, we wish him the best and thank him for his service. Okay, real quick. These are illegal. They are illegal, unpermitted attachments to city and PPL infrastructure. So if you happen to be a person that goes around town, I see a lot of these in the southwest and southeast, please stop. They are illegal, you can be fined. And more significantly, they are immoral. This thing that happens where you come to someone who might be behind on their water bill or their property taxes, just trying to keep a home in a difficult time, and you offer to pay them pennies on the dollar for what we have all accepted is the American method of wealth generation, that is owning a home. Yeah, it's destructive to our communities and homes in the City of Lancaster. Their highest and best use is to house human beings, not to make profits for flippers who want to get in, make their couple of hundred thousand dollars, and get out. So please stop, thanks. And I just want to thank this council, the mayor, and staff in the administration. Since March 2020, we've been getting our butts kicked in a lot of ways. COVID, revenue loss, protests, courts, national elections, what have you. And I like to think that we've thrown some pretty good punches of our own, but I do want to thank all of you for sticking with it. It's been a tough one, and I think there is more to come. But as you know, it is the solstice today. It's the darkest day of the year, it's only going to get brighter, y'all. Thank you. And comments, council comments?
Council President, may I?
Please.
I want to thank everybody here for the kind words, the thoughts, and your prayers. It's been eight years for me to sit at this table. There's been a lot of individuals that have shared this table with me, and I appreciate all their acknowledgements, their guidance, and sometimes their help. To the administration, thank you. We came on board together, and we're still here. To all the administration and department heads, thank you for all your hard work, for all the kind words, and for every little thing that you do for the citizens of this city. It is admirable to me to know that you're here and that you continue the hard work that you do. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. Other council comments?
I just want to say, Pete, love you.
Love you back.
Okay, for the last time in 2021, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Have a good holiday, everyone, have a happy new year, we will see you in January. Thank you.